Okay, folks, thanks for coming out this evening. At 7:30, this meeting is called to order. If we could please rise and salute the flag.
(inaudible). For the United States of America, in the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, evergreen, eternal.
Angela, roll call, please.
Amy Funahashi here. James Fee.
Here.
Megan Nolan.
Here.
Diane Gundry.
Here.
Tony Heil.
Here.
Kyle Schenk. Here. Thank you, Mr. Bell and Mr. Truman. Go ahead, take it away.
All right, good evening, everybody. First up for council consideration is the acceptance of resignation from Mr. Corey Scott from Bridgeport Borough Council.
All right, I'll make the motion to accept.
A second.
And thank you, Mr. Heil. Motion for Mr. Heil, second by Ms. Funahashi. Additional questions or comments from council? I can just say, we certainly accept the resignation with regrets. We don't like to see Mr. Scott go, but we do know that he's moving to be closer to family.
Yeah, I know that I wasn't here at the last meeting when he announced, and I know Corey has done so much good work and proactive work here. Sometimes in a community, you need to convince someone who's good at things to show up and do things, and there's never been any convincing with Corey. He's really done the work of being a council member even before he was on council, and I hope that wherever he is can take advantage of his talents and good attitude.
Questions from the public on that motion? All right then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up for council consideration is the acceptance of resignation from Kenneth Freymoyer from the zoning hearing board. Members of council, as we all know, Mr. Freymoyer is a lifelong, if not, near lifelong, if not lifelong, resident of the borough and has served in many different capacities throughout the years, not only the zoning hearing board, but heavily involved in the Bridgeport Fire Department, and he currently serves as the Borough Fire Marshal. This simply comes down to a Pennsylvania Borough Code ruling. Mr. Freymoyer is unable to, or any person who sits on a Pennsylvania municipal zoning hearing board is not allowed to hold other office, and upon discovery of this, Mr. Freymoyer had to choose between the two, and of course, he chose his lifelong love of service to the community through fire protection and wishes to stay on as fire marshal.
I'll make a motion to accept Ken's resignation from zoning hearing board.
A second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, second from Ms. Nolan, and Mr. Truman, I don't know if that was you or Mr. Freymoyer that looked into that issue with Borough Code, but I appreciate you doing that just to make sure everybody's in compliance. Any other questions or comments from council? We certainly would like to thank Mr. Freymoyer for his service on the ZHB. Questions from the public? All right, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous.
And next up for council consideration, the third part of the trifecta, acceptance of resignation from Mr. Roger Burris from the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Burris and his wife will be moving out of the borough in the very near future, so he submitted his resignation to us recently as well.
I'll make the motion to accept the resignation. A second.
Motion from Ms. Gundry, and was seconded by Ms. Nolan, and again, we would certainly like to thank Mr. Burris for his time on the Civil Service Commission. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you. And Mr. Truman, will be advertising the openings, or I guess soliciting for volunteers or candidates for the Civil Service Commission and the council spot?
We will.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Next up, we have a mayoral proclamation, naming the first week in May as Elks Club Youth Week, and with that, I will turn it over to Mayor Jack Seer.
Thank you. I guess it was last week, so very recently, I had a couple of members of the Elks Club reach out to me asking for this proclamation, and I think it's a really great idea. So, they do themselves already have several events lined up during the first week of May. They're having a Rita's Night for the kids, I think it's May 4th, and they're doing their Brad Fox Memorial Fishing Derby Competition, that'll be on Saturday, the 7th. So, there's a lot of fun events lined up, and I hope everyone can attend if they come. But so, to that, I will read the proclamation. This is for, again, Youth Week, whereas the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Elks has designated May 1st through 7th as Youth Week, to honor America's junior citizens for their accomplishments, and to give fitting recognition of their services to the community, state, and nation, and whereas the Bridgeport Elks will sponsor an observance during that week in tribute to the junior citizens of this community, and whereas no event could be more deserving of our support and participation than one dedicated to these young people who represent the nation's greatest resource and who, in the years ahead, are privileged to assume the responsibility for the advancement of our free society, and whereas our youth need the guidance, inspiration, and encouragement which we alone can give in order to develop those qualities of character essential for future leadership and go forth to serve America, and whereas to achieve this worthy objective, we should demonstrate our partnership with the youth, our understanding of their hopes and aspirations, and a sincere willingness to help prepare them in every way for the responsibilities and opportunity of citizenship. Now therefore, I, Beth Jackseer, Mayor of Bridgeport, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim the first week in May as Youth Week, and urge all departments of government, civic, fraternal, and patriotic groups, and our citizens generally, to participate wholeheartedly in its observance. So, thank you to the Elks for this really great Youth Week, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, that's great, and just so it's on the record again, the Elks Club has been fantastic in town, so anything we can do to support them and get the word out about that's great, so thank you for putting this together.
All right, thank you, Mayor Jackseer. Moving on, next up for council consideration, an amended resolution, Resolution 2022-27, the master casting agreement with PennDOT. Members of council, this was adopted at last, the April 12th meeting. There was a discrepancy in the language located within the first resolution that was not to PennDOT's satisfaction, so we offer up this amended resolution in order to placate the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Mr. Fee, for the amendment of Resolution 2022, Year 27, regarding the master casting agreement. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public on this riveting item? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Truman, for taking care of that.
Thank you, President Schenk. Thank you, members of council. Moving on, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-28, appointing a new member to the Bridgeport zoning hearing board.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Jason Sexhour to the zoning hearing board.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion from Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Funahashi, to appoint Mr. Jason Sexhour to the zoning hearing board. Looking very, looking forward to having him on the seat there. He's been a great resident. I know he's been very interested in getting involved in town. Any additional questions or comments on the appointment? Or from the public? All right then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, then, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, very good. I will notify Mr. Sexhour. Congratulations. Moving on, for council consideration, Resolution 2022-29, appointing KRF Environmental as the Borough Recycling Coordinator. Members of council, as we discussed a few meetings ago, the 2020 U.S. Census data just recently started rolling out, and it appears, that, I shouldn't say it appears, it is documented that Bridgeport's population is above 5,000 residents, 5,015 to be exact. Again, as discussed a couple of meetings ago, that elevation or threshold in population brings with it a couple of different caveats, and one of them related to the DEP is that we are now a mandatory, both commercial and residential recycling community, although we had already taken it upon ourselves several years back to enact that without hitting the 5,000 resident mark, and part and parcel to that is we must now name an official Borough Recycling Coordinator. KRF Environmental has been operating in this capacity for many, many years, just never had the official DEP designation, so this is just memorializing and affirming this for DEP's satisfaction.
I'll make a, I'll go for the resolution, appointing KRF.
Second that.
We have a motion made by Mr. Heil, and that was seconded by Ms. Nolan, for this resolution, appointing KRF Environmental as our recycling coordinator. Additional questions or comments from council?
I have a question. Mr. Truman, can you just go into a little detail about what services they currently provide?
What they do for the borough is they reach, they file our 902 and 904 grants. 904 grant is the annual recycling tonnage report that we are required to submit to the DEP, so what, and KRF is the initials for Ms. Kate Ferry, who is the president of KRF. She reaches out to all of the regional haulers and local haulers that do business within the borough, gathers the tonnage reports from the haulers, gathers the tonnage reports from all the large and small businesses throughout town, collates that, compiles it, and puts it into a nice succinct little report for the borough on an annual basis. She also helped in the past. Ms. Ferry helped us draft our recycling ordinance, and the 902 grant is an educational grant through the DEP, an optional one, whereas, excuse me, whereas the 904 is not optional, that municipalities may apply to periodically in order to obtain grant money to do certain recycling-oriented educational implementations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, either from the dais or from the public? All right then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, then, that's unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up for council consideration, Resolution 2022-30, executing a three-year planning services agreement with the Montgomery County Planning Commission. Members of council, and members of the audience, this would be the second three-year planning services agreement that Bridgeport Borough engaged with the Monco Planning Commission, the first one having expired last year, and the end result of that three-year partnership was the development of a new comprehensive plan that the borough ruled out late, later in 2021. There are a host of different potential projects to partner with the MCPC on for this next agreement, including, but not exclusive to, a zoning and subdivision land development ordinance revision or rework, a parks master plan, a detailed parking study of the borough, and that is just the tip of the iceberg. So, I think that this is a, the total, the total cost on this is $55,000, and I believe that through the subsidy program that the county offers, the borough only pays 50% of that, so we're looking at about a $27,500 commitment over the course of three years. I think it makes sense to engage in this agreement for a host of different reasons.
One of the best reasons to do it is we have a comprehensive plan now, and they're going to help us implement the many things, many tasks we have involved, maybe decisions we're going to have in place. So, I'll make the motion, and also, we need to begin having meetings again, or maybe have a new subcommittee to talk about the implementation of our comprehensive plan to make sure that we don't just get something shiny, and I think that was great, so I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Heil, seconded by Ms. Gundry, for the resolution executing the agreement with Montgomery County Planning Commission. Any additional questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is unanimous. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And finally, for this portion of the meeting, for council consideration, approval of bills and salaries for the April 2022 month.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion from Ms. Nolan, seconded by Mr. Fee, to the approval of the bills and salaries for April. Questions or comments from council? Or the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that is unanimous. Thanks.
All right, very good. That concludes the manager's report portion of this evening's proceedings, and with that, we can move forward to unfinished business. Are there any matters of unfinished business that any members of council would like to discuss this evening? Very well, moving on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports for this evening?
Yep, I have a report from the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Just want to say thank you to all of our volunteers who came out to cleanup day this past Saturday, April 23rd. We had 15 volunteers who collected 17 bags of trash and multiple articles of clothing, so I hope everyone is keeping their pants on in town. I would also like to thank The Rib House and Dino's for catering our lunch and sponsoring that. Everything was delicious, as always. I also had a few residents who reached out to me after the cleanup event to say that they were going to go around in their neighborhood, you know, the next day or in the days leading up, and other residents who said that they cleaned up that morning but didn't officially check in at Borough Hall. So, I want to thank everyone who made, took the time and effort to clean up on their own time around their own neighborhoods, and even though we, the Sustainability Committee hosts spring and fall cleanup days, I always have a huge supply of trash bags and gloves, so if anybody ever wants to do an impromptu cleanup day, please reach out. I will be happy to supply you with all of that supplies. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Nolan. Any other committee reports?
I would like to mention that there's a Events Committee meeting on Monday, May the 2nd, right here at 6:30. We'll be planning a lot of fun events coming up for the summer, including summer movie nights and the carnival, so anyone who's interested in helping out should come in. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Funahashi.
Ms. Nolan, how many cleanup days is that for you?
Are you asking me to math right now? Let's see, 18, yeah, I would say six.
Thank you for doing all of those. I know it definitely makes a difference.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, very good. Moving on to the mayor's report, Mayor Jackseer.
Thank you. Just have a few things this evening. This past weekend, I received a tour from the Reach Indoor Climbing and Fitness Manager, Ivan, just of the setup of their 2022 Collegiate National Championship, which was hosted there. They actually had competitors from all around the country participating, and it was a really incredible event to have here in Bridgeport, like a national event, which is just hopefully one of the many to come. Yesterday, Chief Beretta and I spent all day finishing Phase 1 of updating our policy and procedure manual for the police department. It's been a project in the works for quite a while, and it's just good to have it finally moving along to Phase 2, so that's very exciting on our end. Today, I met with Fran Held, who's the director of the organization Mitzvah Circle. They're an organization that's currently located in the Audubon area, and they assist families in need with items that government programs will not help pay for. Families in need are welcome to fill out an application on their website. They don't need a referral or anything, and they are eligible for assistance once every three months. Mitzvah Circle is intended to supplement items that she might not be buying at the grocery store every week, like clothing or a microwave even, but they also assist with products like diapers and menstruation products. So, on top of, on top of personalizing their care packages for each applicant's family, they also have volunteers that deliver them directly to your door. So, if you'd like to learn more about donating to them, volunteering, or reaching out for help, feel free to reach out to me, because I now have information for them, or you can stop by my office hours or grab an information sheet, which I've left at the front table over here, and yeah, so you can either ask me or reach out to them directly. And just as a reminder, the Mental Health Fair will be taking place in this room on Saturday, May 14th at noon. We're going to be hosting organizations who can assist you or loved ones struggling with their mental health, and there will be speakers discussing their mental health journeys, and there will be some really great giveaways. We now have sponsored prizes by Frosty Falls, Lotus J, and Junebug Sweet Treats, so make sure that you stop by for your chance to win them while also giving your mental well-being a treat. And that's all I have for you this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor Jackseer. Moving forward to chief's report, Chief Beretta, sir.
Good evening, everyone. So, you might have seen the water main break today. It was on 4th in the area of East 4th and Depot Street, so it's an eight-inch main that's separated. Luckily, there was no, for a change, a large water main broke, and actually, no one was out of service with water, so that's, I don't know how that works, but it did. They should be finishing up any of the kind of work anytime now.
I believe it's because it was a hydrant.
Ah, maybe that's what it was. Yeah, underneath the, it was right along the line underneath the train tracks. It was crazy. So, there's Prospect Street, I saw on social media, people are complaining about people in cars maybe using drugs, leaving needles, things of that nature, and so, social media is a wonderful platform. It's a great way to outreach a lot of people. Call the police. That person who might be nodding off and then they leave while they're driving the car, probably intoxicated. Perhaps we can intervene in one way or another, and perhaps it's not what people think. Maybe it's not that, but either way, if you see something, say something. We can do something about it. If there's a problem and you see some drug paraphernalia and you don't want to touch it yourself, and I would advise you not to, you can call the police department, and we'll be glad to dispose of those things for you. But we don't need to be everywhere, because everyone here has eyes, so please use them and help us help you. I posted something about National Weather Service. They've been putting out some, this past month, some updates on how to read, like severe weather forecasts and look at their color-coded type of graphs, so I've been putting some of that stuff out. Hopefully, that's helpful. I know sometimes, over, because of our weather events and our own disaster that we had here with the flood, it could put people at less than ease, but greater level of communication should be better. We all should be more aware, and so, a lot of times, if there's a greater weather forecasted, we might post something out there, just saying, "Look at, look at the Mount Holly or National Weather Services, weather forecast for the Bridgeport-Narstedt area with water levels." So, we're going to constantly feed you a little bit more information than was fed before. Hopefully, that's helpful. The, a few of us attended Trooper Siska and Max viewings and funerals. They were the troopers that were killed on the 21st of March. Our flags were at half-staff, and we were wearing mourning bands for 30 days, so that period is over now. So, best wishes to the family. Also, for those of you that are local, Bill Shutter was a longtime police officer in Upper Marine, and he just passed away. His viewing was yesterday, so for the friends and family here, local, Captain Shutter, the best. We had our new vehicle was picked back up. It's another Ford Hybrid Electric. Due to the supply chain issues, we're probably not going to have everything that we need to upfit the vehicle until the end of next month, so we're looking at that in early, early June to put it in service. We welcome back Officer Kaiser Turi. He started FTO. He's back in the FTO program. He was in for a week before. Then we have Officer LeBoutelle, who was just sworn in, and he's in his second week of FTO, so welcome to both of them. I want to thank Detective Murphy for his work and some of the, we digitized amongst many other things, digitized the evidence program and barcoded things, so we're actually going to destroy some things that have been in property and holding for 40 years. So, it's a lot of work he's done, so I want to thank him for that. Also, it's Child Abuse Awareness Month. You saw, if you went past CHOP and King of Prussia, they had all the little, little spinny blue and silver things. Child abuse is a very real thing. We get a lot of investigations, child lines that come from Harrisburg. There's a lot that goes on in a community, whether it's at the school, school-aged children or older. So, thank you to Officer Selfall, her work that she does, because we've been kept very busy, unfortunately, with a lot of child abuse cases. That's all I have for you. Have a wonderful evening.
All right, thank you, Chief Beretta. Moving on to new business, are there any members of council with new business for this evening? All right, very good, then we can proceed to open forum and announcements. Are there any announcements for this evening? Seeing none, we can then proceed to public comment. Are there any members of the public that wish to come forward with public comment? Mr. Ciders.
Thank you, Mr. Lester Ciders, 36 West Rambo Street, Borough of Bridgeport. I only have one question. I'm going to direct this to every member of council, especially to our Borough Manager. I know we bought a street sweeper that we paid pretty penny for. I have yet to see that thing out on the streets, except for the main streets. When are we going to do the side streets? Or do we just buy it and do the state highways?
Lester, I am deeply sorry that you have yet to see it on the side streets. However, we run it on the side streets on a weekly basis, sir. We-
Yet to see it on West Rambo Street.
Well, I will personally give you a call the next time it's on Rambo Street, because we knock out, we knock out the side streets with great consistency and frequency as we do the main drag, Lester.
Can you tell people to move their cars so they can do it along the gutters?
We are in the process of developing a sweeper route program. Chief Beretta and Superintendent Lang are working on that as we, as we speak.
Okay, I was just wondering how long it was going to take before we started doing that. Thank you.
You got it.
And I'll say, Mr. Ciders, I know you had brought that up to my attention once when I was at your door or saw you outside, and that, I said it to Keith, mentioned it, it was like on a weekend or something, and like, that week where that, they came out, because you had sent a picture, I said, "You need to get pictures when this happens so people know," because people don't always know. You know, if a street sweeper came on my street and I was at work, I wouldn't know, so we should let people know more publicly if we can, so people are aware when these things are done. But I know that it was done then, because I brought it up, it was over a year ago, but I do remember that conversation. And I do want to say thank you to your work with the crossing guards, since you're here. It means a lot for my kids and all the safety with that street on Ford Street, that they're able to walk home safely, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. I have a great, great bunch of children and parents come across here, and they pull up every one of them.
Any other public comment? All right.
I do just want to add quickly, my appreciation to the mayor for her Mental Health Fair. Unfortunately, I won't be able to attend, but with May being Mental Health Month, and recently had suicide near me in my area in Bridgeport, and it's not the first time here in Bridgeport that that's come up, and I know that the mayor's made this a priority since she ran for- And I know that the mayor has made this a priority since she ran for council, not just mayor. So I hope that people will not write it off and will not forget about it. It's an important thing to keep in mind. Reach out and ask for help, and thank you so much for doing that. It means a lot in our community.
Thank you, Vice President Hile. And just to expound upon that a little bit further, you know, certainly, when I say that Chief Beretta and Superintendent Lang, or Working Foreman Lang, Superintendent Lang, whatever nomenclature you prefer, are developing that route, it's not, it is not solely in their hands. It's a collaborative effort. Merely, the fact that parking enforcement, which is of course under the domain of the police department, as well as operation and sweeper route development, which is a function of Public Works, are the two steering and guiding forces in that regard. So we are, we are all developing that currently. So thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah, there you go.
Second.
All right, it is 8:02. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.